All right, well, I'm glad everybody is gathered together today to hold hands. Is this loud enough that we can get started?
We're just all getting situated, AJ. Come on back on the table here.
Come on back, folks. Act like you love each other.
If I call into the number and turn my phone in.
We can't use, I assume I'm asking about this. We can't use the. All we need is a portable speaker.
Why don't I text my child and can you put it on a phone?
What is the link to that? They'll get, they have better or more.
Oh, you have better sound?
Can you, can you send that again?
Yeah, hold on, I'm trying to figure out where do I have it on my phone.
We do a little team building while we're at it. Jason. Best thing you did today. Go.
Best thing I did today. I went to a celebration for our administrative assistance in our activity office.
Go. Good job. Ask it to somebody.
Peter, what was the best thing you did?
There you go.
I got to meet with my team and plan some orientation activities, universal orientation activities. So that's part of my day.
Peter, can you introduce yourself? I don't know that I've ever met you.
Peter LeBlanc.
Oh, okay. I don't, maybe I've seen you on a teams meeting, but yeah, thank you.
I'm talent personnel now. I'm just your principal at King and at.
All right. All right, Peter, popcorn to somebody.
Jake, go ahead.
It's Peter. It was a busy day. The best thing I did, I think I drove home real quick to say hi to my kids. We did a lot of fun today.
Kim, you want to put that up here?
AJ, can you hear? Okay. Yes, I can.
The best thing I got to do today was meet with some people around collaboration on network partners and SSS supports.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, AJ, in terms of sound, you hearing us okay? I'm kind of right next to you, so I should be fairly.
I can hear you. I can hear you all right.
Does everybody, everybody hear AJ pretty well? Perfect. I think we're okay.
All right. Well, first, just to check in with folks on why we're having this conversation. So our intention this evening is to, for the board to get to a place of comfort with its own guardrails. This is a normal process. What happens is the board adopts a set of guardrails that describes the community's values that must be protected. And then the administration puts together a set of interim guardrails of this is how we'll manage, this is how we'll monitor progress so that we'll be able to evidence to the board that the guardrails are in fact being honored. When there is a transition in leadership, it is normal that the incoming leader, though they have no authority over the guardrails, that's purely the domain of the board, they do have authority over the interim guardrails, the progress monitoring component. And so it is reasonable to give incoming leaders an opportunity to revisit the interim metrics to ensure that they still align with the strategy that the leader plans to deploy. And so what we'll do this evening is we'll give the staff an opportunity to go first. They'll, they'll share what some of the interim guardrails are that they've developed for each of the guardrails. And then after that, and board members will have opportunity to ask question, clarifying questions. The point during this time is just to understand what the superintendent has selected and why, and because they represent his interpretation of the board's guardrails. After that process is complete and people have been able to answer their clarifying questions, then we will invite the administration to step aside and then I'll have a conversation just directly with the board around each of the guardrails and I'll ask a simple question. Based on these interim guardrails that the superintendent has proposed, are you comfortable that they are a reasonable interpretation of your guardrail, in which case we would keep the guardrail? Are you not comfortable that they're a reasonable interpretation? In which case, your option is perhaps you would want to modify the guardrail. You don't get to modify the interim, but if you think that the superintendent is misinterpreted, then you can modify the guardrail, which will then allow the superintendent to go back and try again now that you've made the guardrail more clear. Or you may decide, you know what, this isn't even still relevant. We can just delete this guardrail entirely. So I'll invite you to either keep, delete, or modify the guardrail based on having had a conversation about what the interim guardrails are proposed to be. So that's what we'll do. Hopefully, we'll have a little bit of time at the end to talk about some of the board behavior issues that we didn't have a chance to get to in a previous conversation. Then, as your board chair said, even though we're starting 15 minutes behind, ideally, then we'll be able to adjourn around 7:30. So with that being the nature of the work, I want to hand it over immediately to the administration. They'll take the first round. They'll describe each of their interim guardrails and board members will just be asking clarifying questions so you understand what it is that they mean and why, and why they chose that one. And then, and ideally, we'll get through that as quickly as possible. And then that will save time for the board to have its own conversation around, okay, do we, based on what we've seen, do we want to keep, delete, or modify the guardrails we have? With that, Matt, take us away.
Perfect. Thanks, AJ. So just briefly, I want to make sure that I introduce actually who the team members are represented here. So we got Peter LeBlanc, Director and Talent Personnel, Carleen, who is with our Heartland Education Agency, but she's also getting ready to retire here in two weeks. So she's been amazing and will continue to help out in many, many respects. Shelley Bostovich, who Executive Director of Student Family Services. Tim Schott, Executive Director of Leadership and Learning. Jason Allen, Director of Activities and Community Education. Allison Bukovic, Director of Community Schools. Allison Finley, Director of Student Family Services. And Kelly Schofield, Director of Teaching and Learning for K-5. Did I miss anybody? I've got Mary Grinstead, sorry. Oh, sorry, Jake. I didn't see you back there. Jake Troja, Director of Climate Culture. Mary Grinstead, here at the table, Director of Data and Assessment. We've got Sheila Brown back there also. Sheila is an AP at Virtual Campus and is also doing her doctoral work. And so she's been kind enough to engage in this process with us in many respects, but she's also collecting some data for her dissertation. So, perfect. Did I miss anybody? Okay. So thanks for the opportunity to talk through this. So the team and I got together a little over a month ago and spent a few different evenings and days together and working through what we believe are the the interpretation of the guardrails. And so what you have for the first guardrail is three particular interim guardrails that we felt like are representative of the guardrail itself. I'll draw your attention down to the rationale below. So this was a document that, and AJ, I sent you and, well, had asked Cindy to forward it to you, the most up-to-date version, which came from today's conversation this morning. That just included a few more definitions that might be helpful for the team to refer to. So in that first guardrail regarding the superintendent shall not allow the continuation of systemic racism or negligible treatment of students, we thought that these three interim guardrails allow us to not only interpret the actual guardrail, but also challenged us and pushed us as a district to live up to the values that are within the guardrail itself. So the rationale beneath each of the guardrails and the interim guardrails, I won't read that to you, but I'll just highlight a few things. The first is that we felt like, in terms of the first interim guardrail, that the risk ratio for behavior IEP for grades pre-K through 12 for black male students wasn't, I don't know, as a metric that actually we needed to address, specifically around the over-representation of students with IEPs for behavior that are black males. And so we felt like that system in and of itself was not moving in the right direction based on our data and that if we were able to create the conditions where that metric was improved, not only would we meet the letter of the guardrail itself, but it actually will allow us to actually further advance our academic goals as well. So that was one. It's probably important to say also that, in terms of the process that the team went through, what the metrics that are represented here in the interim guardrails, they were derived from a number of different metrics and interims that were presented, analyzed, debated, discussed amongst the team that you see here and a few others that are not present with us tonight. And this is what we felt like was the most representative of the actual guardrail itself. And then again, of course, the K-8, students in ELL programming that also show typical or aggressive growth. I would like to draw your attention to that particular terminology, which is in the definitions. Typical or aggressive growth is, as defined by FastBridge itself. And so you can see the categories there, if that's helpful. The risk ratio for behavioral referrals for level two or higher for all students or for black male students in grades K through 12, we also felt was a representative interim guardrail that would allow us to meet the letter and the intent of the guardrail itself. We also added an additional definition. If you'll look on your guardrail number one definitions, the behavioral level one, level two, level three, level four events of what would constitute a level two or higher to help get a little bit more context for that. Let's see. Lastly, we talked about the, well, in addition to that, the comparison data with white ethnocentric behavior expectations for students. We did a lot of debating around that and around the comparison data set for black males versus all students versus white students. And we landed on white students as being the metric. And I will tell you where the grapple specifically resided was this idea that by calling out white behavior as the comparison group, it felt like we were normalizing white behavior. And that was the grapple that we continued to lift up. And so ultimately, we landed on the fact that we're going to stick with the white ethnocentric because of not only the definition that we have, but also of what our data says. And we didn't feel like using all students was the most accurate picture to provide the truth of our data. And so we wanted to make sure that we represented the guardrail with the most accurate data possible. So why don't I stop after that? And we can talk through guardrail one and then maybe we go, or AJ, is that right? Do you want me to go through all of them?
I'd go one at a time and figure out if folks have questions.
Perfect. So why don't I stop there? And if there's any questions or clarifications that I and my team could provide, we're happy to do so.
I do have a couple of questions. And you said you've looked at the data and you chose black males. And so, because one of the things I'm noticing with our student outcome data is we have two goals around black males, but if you look at the data, it's really all blacks. And so is there something that's standing out for black males? Is it all black students? I'm just kind of curious what the data.
Yeah, because we also talked about that as well, too. And I'll look to Mary and the team to talk about.
The risk ratio for all black students was approximately, because I'm not going to remember exactly, 1.7 compared to the 1.0 or 2.05. So there is a, so there is more disproportionality for the, for the male students there. And we saw, I don't remember the, when you add in the females for the behavior IEP risk ratio.
Females were significantly lower than males across the board.
Yes. And then the other question I had, and maybe this is covered under C with the level two and above behavioral referrals. So, and I went back to kind of what, you know, we know we're looking at a full new set of interim guardrails, but one of the things that was lifted up when we talked about this back in January, February was possibly looking at the out-of-school suspension rates and knowing that the policy change was fighting. Would that be covered in that E? I mean, are we seeing a disproportionate number of like the black males or black students that are being pulled into out-of-school suspension because of behaviors? Or because, is that considered level two? And so that would identify that.
Yeah, so we had that same discussion. And so we settled on the referrals. We did talk a lot about out-of-school suspension time or actually just loss of instructional time. And I believe that's actually captured in some other interim guardrails. For this particular guardrail, we felt that the the interim guardrail was more appropriate to speak to the system of referral writing and our adult behaviors and creating those conditions as opposed to the result of the referral itself.
Thank you.
Good question.
Matt, anecdotally, from time to time, you will hear teachers talk about underreporting, maybe, yeah, I'll just say that. So how, and this is kind of in general, how do you address that? What, what are the types of things that you do to try and address underreporting?
Yeah, there's a few things, right? So we had that same conversation multiple times over, too. So we've been down this road before. I don't know if you, if those of you that were on the board a few years ago, several years ago, I don't know how many years ago that was. With, and what I mean by that is we have some goals specifically around referrals. And so what that manifested into was I just won't write referrals at this point in time. And it didn't address actually the, the opportunities around a few things, right? Training and systems and practices and policies around mindsets and beliefs, but also around just organizational structures. The referral writing process, the belief in referrals around exclusionary practices. We also, at that time, did not have our strategic plan with the seven levers. That included very specific work and integrated work around access to instruction and grade level standard-based curriculum, SEL supports, community building, safety and security. We didn't have all of those other integral parts that created a holistic support for students in a tier-one environment, as well as a tier-two and tier-three environment. And so that's one aspect of this. We feel like our, our, our plan, our strategic plan actually is more holistic, is the first difference. The second difference is that these interim guardrails are actually for us at the central office level and not really for building level. And so there is no goal at the building level. There will be no goal at the building level around referral writing. It's actually for us to monitor our own systemic structures, processes, practices, professional learning, what we're doing in terms of our inputs to improve this data set. It's not, it's not a building level goal. Which is a fundamental difference than what we did last.
You'll have building level data. It won't be a building level goal.
Correct. Correct. That's a lesson learned from last time. You know, thinking that if, if, if we talk about the result of writing referrals at the building level and creating a goal around that, that that would move us in the right direction, it, it moved us in multiple directions. And none of them were necessarily correct, if you will, in terms of changing hearts and minds and looking at the opportunities to be more inclusive. It became more of a compliance. We don't feel like we're in that position any longer, and it's not a building-based goal.
I apologize. I don't, if you are put on a behavior IEP that is probably different than an individual with a diagnosed disability, do you come, like, do you come off an IEP, a behavior IEP?
You can. Absolutely. That's not super common.
So I guess what I'm trying to get at, and maybe this is answering it, is it's, if somebody is put on a behavior IEP in their elementary school, is that in essence some type of, I don't know, tracking or?
It is. So what you're saying about this, the student who is on an IEP for behavior has been identified as having a disability in the area of behavior. And so that is special education. And what we see with our data is most often, students are identified with a behavior goal early on in elementary. So during their elementary years. And what happens over time is that we see students who have behavior difficulties remove more and more in the general education environment over time. We see differences from elementary and then to the middle school and then the highest rate of exclusion from general ed and high school. So it's an entire system. And yes, a student could be exited from an IEP. Nationally, the percentage is about 4%. So it's a big deal. Within the district, we're about 5%, nothing to write home about, for sure. But sometimes, you know, we'll hear that, gosh, it took a long time to have that student serve through that IEP. And the reality is we should be trying everything else before we get to that because, you know, that's my child, your child. We would want to make sure that we've done that because the reality is they probably are not going to be exited for very little time.
And one of the things I'll add to that is one of the reasons why we lifted up this interim guardrail is because there is statewide and nationally, and it's certainly not different here in Des Moines Public Schools, is that we have an over-identification of black males with a behavior goal in special education. And we believe that is directly attributable to biases and systemic racism and how we perceive the behavior of others or lack thereof. Because it's a white Eurocentric norm culture that we have to begin to attack, if you will, if that's the right word, challenge.
One more question, then I might ask Shelley afterwards. So bad behavior does not necessarily equal disability. So I think I'm just trying to understand, if I just have bad behavior, where do I fit here? I don't, because I don't have.
All behavior communicates something, right? And so what we're seeing is that there's a stress on the system and teachers are feeling like, okay, this, a student is behaving outside of the norm and trying to communicate something. And we didn't have, to Matt's point about this, this time around, we have more support that we're putting in place for students in terms of interventions and that kind of thing. And so really, it's easy to say, this student needs to go somewhere else for intervention. Not sure if I answered your question or not, Jake.
What you're talking with a student that doesn't have an IEP that is struggling with behavior or needs reporting behavior, that would show up in C.
Got it. Okay.
Support would show up there, but that, those students that
Because you don't necessarily want them in an IEP.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And Shelley, a comment that you just made, students behaving outside of the norm or something to that effect. It's more so students behaving outside the expectation of classroom approved behavior, not necessarily, it has, there is certainly a norm, but I think just by saying a behavioral norm puts us into, is putting us into a bucket when we, when we look at our black and brown families. The norm of communicating various different needs as a child looks different in a white household versus the black or brown house today. So I think we, I think we've already been very vulnerable already with discussing some of these topics. But knowing that the word norm around a lot of what is in these guardrails is not
perceived.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
These are good questions. We, we had similar questions of ourselves and of our own data here in this process.
Are there any other questions that board members need to ask to understand these, or can we proceed?
I had just one, one more thing. Wanted to go back to Jackie's comment about underreporting. And so you said that it's not a building goal.
Correct.
And that this information would be more for you or for your team and that you would review that process. How do you do that?
How do we review the process?
Results. Or how do you, how do you ensure that people are indeed not underreporting?
Yeah, I, I get what you're saying. I think if, so I'm going to reflect it back and you tell me if I'm tracking with you. I think the question is, is if there's a, the potential for underreporting in terms of writing referrals, how would we know that? Is that the basic, is that the question? Well, those are, those are some inputs that we have to actually still pull together, right? So if we feel like this collaboratively are the right interim guardrails that represent the guardrails, the next step would be for the team and I to make sure that we have inputs and outputs in place that we are tracking and monitoring to know whether or not the integrity of referral writing is being withheld. So because I could tell you quickly, like, survey data. But you're going to see, we have some surveys already and we have some, some additional thoughts around surveys. So I don't know that that would cut it to be, I guess, transparent in my thinking right now, but that, that's some opportunity, I think, for, for our team to discuss specifically around those inputs. And what does it look like to operate from the district office level, but also at the building base level in terms of integrity of what we know about referrals and what the intent referrals are and how that actually should be interpreted by, by both student, family, and staff.
I think that my question is more, there was a comment that was made about this conversation having taken place years ago. And, you know, today, we're still talking, you know, about the same concerns. And so how, how do we make sure that, you know, four or five years from now, we're not having, you know, still this conversation?
Yeah, that's, I think it's, you're right on point. And I think that'll be determined based on the inputs and outputs that we get based on this next iteration, right? And so our input last time was to go to the schools, one of the inputs, was to go to the schools and say, create a goal around reducing referrals. And what folks did was they said, we can absolutely reduce referrals. Stop writing referrals. And if I wasn't overtly stating that, then I was. And if I wasn't overtly stating that, then I was insinuating that we should stop writing referrals because there's a goal around it. And so we know that we won't do that input again, which is why it's not a building based goal. It's more of a central office and a district level monitoring metric that we think supports and interprets the guard rail, but then allows us and, and challenges us to be more creative and more innovative in our approach to our inputs around the professional learning and around our systems and protocols for monitoring those metrics.
Right. I would love to see more transparency in numbers and reporting, just because I think that that really gives us an indication of where children are and how we can be supportive of them. And ultimately reach the goals that we have.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that something that would be provided in a monitoring report?
I would assume that what's provided in the monitoring report is the data from our interims. So if there's something else like that, then I feel, I mean, I'm looking to you, Cindy and AJ. I feel then we would have to somehow put that into an interim guard rail.
Well, wouldn't you ask Kelly, if I remember one of the other monitoring reports, you'd, you'd, your, well, not your baseline, if they're comparing it to all, you'd have it broken down by.
Well, if you remember last, one of our last monitoring reports, we got, we get all that data because we always ask. And so staff's like, oh yeah, they always ask and we put it in there. But I remember AJ telling us, don't do it. Like, you report what you report and all that becomes like, if there are questions that we would have ahead of time, we should ask that. But it's not stuff necessarily data that should be in a report. AJ, I'm trying to, as best I can reflect what you.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
That is 100% correct.
All white students, then?
Yeah, so that, that is completely correct. One other, so however long we need to have in this conversation is however long we need to have. We're pushing up, approaching half an hour in this conversation, which currently puts us on track to finish up by eight o'clock tonight. And so if we, if there are more questions that folks have to gain clarity about what the administration means, this is the time for that. This is decidedly not the ideal place to have conversations about whether you agree or disagree, or whether this is right or wrong, or what's happened historically. We'll have time for those conversations a little bit later, but first, we definitely want to let administration get through describing why they selected the interims they did and giving people opportunity to ask whatever clarifying questions you have. So that being said, yes, your point that whatever the data is, that's the data. And so it's not this data plus 20 other things. The data is the data. That's the only thing you should expect to see in the monitoring report. Other questions people have about this specific guard rail and the superintendent's proposed interim guard rails? All right, if not, you want to go to guardrail number two?
Yeah. So the second guard rail is that the superintendent shall not allow the social emotional learning needs of marginalized students to be unaddressed. So there's a couple of definitions in, in the back of the document there. I do want to take a quick moment just to read the, the first two statements of that rationale, because I think it actually paints the whole of the picture, which is examining DMPS student achievement across a variety of metrics. Students with IEPs have the lowest achievement. Therefore, students with IEPs are the most underserved and marginalized student groups at DMPS. So that, I wanted to emphasize that because that dataset and knowing that information was the basis of how we chose to represent this guard rail in terms of making sure that our interims are moving the needle and we're, we're lifting up the values of our community and what the board has set. So that being said, what we looked at in terms of the interim guardrails were specifically the, the self-efficacy measures in Panorama. We selected again Panorama because it allows us to not only have very granular data within the district, but it also allows us to norm ourselves nationally. The other aspect of that that I'd like to highlight is we have two self-efficacy sort of measures as our interim guardrails. The third is around student relationships. The other spec, we talked about this as a, as a team. While these are also significant for us, is just looking at the effect size from Hattie's research. The self-efficacy effect size is .6, actually .63 actually, which is way above the norm in terms of a year's worth of growth. And the positive of student relationships, student teacher relationships, has a .72 effect size. And so the, the national research around the impact on student outcomes and self-efficacy as well as positive student teacher relationships supports these metrics, these interim guardrail metrics for us to continue to lift up and emphasize these organizational. So I'll, I'll stop there. And again, there's a little bit larger rationale explanation down there, but I think those are the highlights of that rationale.
And by the way, the reference to effect size, Matt, I very much appreciate. If you do wind up revising this particular document, I don't recall that being in the descriptions at the end. That'd be a great thing to add, just as a reminder and for board members to be able to reference.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. Good point, AJ.
Board members, what questions do you have about this particular set of interim guardrails?
It would be helpful to actually understand how many students we're talking about. So I find that I struggle too with some of the other goals when we actually don't just explain the total population. So percent of three to five, of grades three to five students with IEPs, how, how many students are in grade three to five with IEPs? Like, what's the, I guess, what's the baseline? What's the?
The end.
So there was a reference of 19% or 20% of students with IEP somewhere. I don't know.
It's in that rationale.
Yes, in the rationale, yes.
Correct.
That's okay. I just, for me, I find understanding what the face, what the total number is in everything we do really helpful.
We can get that for you, actually.
What, what?
We did look at that actually in our, I'm sorry, AJ, go ahead.
I do not dispute that that is interesting information. I do, however, want to point to the language of the guardrail itself, which is very specific in its scope to marginalized students. And so step one, I would expect to have clarity from the superintendent on, you know, what is the superintendent's, what is the superintendent's definition and what do they think that that means? And your superintendent, you know, offers that. And then I'd be worried about, okay, so what is the size of that group in relation to these? As opposed to what is the size of these groups in relation to all students, because the guardrail does not reference all students.
Yep, yes. But just so I'm clear, if, if we were looking at A, AJ, it's a subset of total marginalized. So is that not?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
And, and that was my point, is I think what you're curious about is what size is the third and fifth graders with IEPs of the entire set of all students identified as marginalized?
Yeah, thank you.
Not what is the size of the, what is the percentage of third graders and fifth graders with IEPs as a set of students within the total district population? That, that's the only point I was making.
Thank you.
Shelley?
I was gonna say, total number of students with IEPs in the district is around 5,000, but I think Mary's gonna get you the exact.
And you don't, I just meant, like,
Sure.
when you look at monitoring and reference, it helps you understand when people are talking about.
Yeah, the, the other data point that I think is probably important to note, and, and we tried to reference it in the rationale, is recognizing the intersectionality that exists for all of our students. In this particular case, what we believe to be the intersectionality for students with IEPs, knowing that we've got an overrepresentation of black students and brown students with an IEP. You know, we've got more males than females, for example, with an IEP. So we, looking at all of those quantifiable numbers and recognizing, acknowledging that there is an intersectionality that exists there, that's the other reason why we went down the road of identifying students with IEPs beyond just the actual dataset itself of students with IEPs as being the most marginalized student group that we need to make sure that we are paying an enormous amount of attention to in terms of our systems, how we're allocating resources, our processes and our practices.
Why do you believe the Panorama Student Survey is an effective tool? That, that
Yeah.
measures a I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah.
Good question.
I'm gonna give my answer and then I'll, I'll open that up to Mary and Jake and team. The first, for two reasons specifically. It's a, it's a nationally normed assessment. And so we get comparisons at a national level to know how we're actually serving our students and our families with that comparison in mind. The drill down aspect of that, of being able to get to a very granular subset of information with the same assessment allows us to be more responsive from, with this, with this assessment. As opposed to, an example would be, I just lost my example out of my head, I forget the name of it. A less granular, a non-student identifiable assessment, just lost the name of it. The St. One, the conditions for learning, the conditions for learning assessment doesn't have a unique identifier. And so your response to that assessment can only be so granular and so in-depth because you just don't know, there's not a disaggregatable dataset, if you will. The Panorama does allow for that. Say that one more time. Very, yeah, love that phrase. So that's my, my two answers to that. What did I miss about, I think it's a great question, why the Panorama? Because we talked about other assessments as well. Did we want to look at that and consider those things? And we landed on Panorama, also because it's, it gives us some continuity with some historical data.
And maybe the question I'm just trying to ask is, you're, you're banking a lot on this survey. And for other things too. And so this is kind of a how question, but how do you know that this is accurately capturing marginalized students?
Effectively and thoroughly.
Effectively and thoroughly.
We can look at response rates.
Yeah, see response rates.
Do you, do you publish that? Does that, where would we see that on an annual or biannual basis?
One time that we bought the board tables to the organization.
Management limitations.
Management limitations.
Would you look at the return rate, are you able, well, maybe you're able to break it down by, so we know like, 90% could be overall, but if we're not capturing, see if you want, maybe just see the data from.
Okay. You do it by demographic?
Well, I mean, depending on how, like, if we're measuring for three to five, grades three to five IEPs, we should be able to get the data for that group. And know that return.
Because of the unique ID?
Because of just the ability to run the analysis.
Got it.
Mary's seen that the data, what we published about the board table and it's, you know, breaking that negative data is the response rate. The response rate of 90% is the whole three to five.
Right, right. And so, I mean, that would be an important piece because of, like, a 30% response rate. And we're obviously, you know, there may be some work to have to be done to assure that those kids are competing. The tool.
Correct.
I want to add a couple of things about.
Please.
Survey, I mean, validated, we send a million students to take it naturally. There are two, the conditions of learning, survey, the state of ours is to take, for the largest history by far. So we're really just ourselves to ourselves. It doesn't really get so good, connected with a lot of people. I think that's important. We can monitor percentage of response rate. That's updated frequently, should be given exactly a number of times. And it's positive perspective based, so maybe you're hearing from students directly how they perceive. We don't have a better measure. Believe the public history, you'll happen to see. Those are some kind of ones.
Is the tool able to be? Oh, I'm, I lost mine. But can it be interpreted in other languages?
Browser based. And it does come free loaded with.
Seven languages right now, or maybe more actually now. I think we, we go with the, I'll double down on what Jake said. We go with the perspective based survey as opposed to something like Sabers, which is in the Fastbridge Assessment suite. Sabers is adult driven, ethnocentric. Again, you're behaving how I expect you to behave. It's, it's not which makes SCL like a checklist that I, I meant the second, which is more of a, I can, I can be compliant and, and code switch. This is, so we, like this survey that came out of, you know, in a higher education institution because it, it gets at what the students are telling us about their social emotional health.
Do you know how long this tool has been around?
A long time.
I haven't seen Mary to research brief behind the, you have access to the research brief.
I wouldn't say 20 years. Came out of Harvard.
District wide for.
Thank you.
Should we jump to guardrail three?
Yeah, Matt, one other thing to be mindful of, I may have missed it, but I couldn't hear the question. What board members often are curious about when they're wondering about the validity of Panorama data or similar data, is they're wondering kind of what percentage of students actually were involved in the survey. You know, it's different if it's 70% versus 90%. So that's normally something that board members find of interest to help them understand how relevant the data is. The other thing that I commonly hear board members asking about Panorama data is they enjoy doing some background reading on the methodology to understand why it is that Panorama puts forth, there's a correlation between a certain set of findings in a certain meaning. So for example, you know, one of the meanings that you're putting forward on this particular document is that when we see the increase in self-efficacy, that that corresponds to Hattie's work around self-efficacy that, you know, has a really particularly strong correlation of .63 with improvements in student outcomes. I think board members, that, that's one of the reasons that I, you know, mentioned. I think that is information that'd be really helpful to have in board members' hands so that when somebody else asks them this question on the screen, that they're able to be responsive to it.
Yes, sir. Got it. Thank you for that.
But with that, yeah, I'd go on to number three.
So the third guard rail, the superintendent shall not allow the composition of the, am I on the right one? Of the composition of the teaching and learning staff to diverge regarding demographic and cultural responsiveness from the student population. And so this one, we've selected two interim guardrails, but have a hold on a third, and, and we can talk a little bit about, about why that is. And again, just to reference the rationale there below, that the, a couple of definitions around the teaching staff that we actually interpret that to mean those with a teaching contract. And so it's not just teachers. There are other staff members that are not directly in the classroom that are also on a teaching contract. So we left them in that interpretation just as a, as a point of context. The other thing that, so just to go through the, the rationale, both percent of teachers who are non-white and the year-to-date separation rates will be measured. That's probably the highlight of this, is that we know based on our data that That's probably the highlight of this is that we know based on our data that we've made little progress towards the hiring of staff of color. Where our additional opportunities are our retention rates of staff of color. So we felt that it's important to reflect in this particular regard in the interim guardrail through a separation rate to make sure that we are not increasing our separation rates, but rather decreasing our separation rates in order to stay within the guardrail of not diverging. We got to have both is basically what I'm trying to say. The the third aspect of that, which speaks to the the cultural responsibility of the guardrail, which you'll see the the bold print where's their hold. We currently, obviously, we offer the Gallup and we have the Gallup Pulse opportunity to utilize as a as an ongoing metric and ongoing measure of our interim guardrail. And we gave you some, the examples are actually the actual questions that we would ask. We we left it as a italicized and as a hold because we don't actually have that data yet. This would be something that we'd be creating new from scratch because we don't currently, oh, just lost our light there.
We can leave it off.
No, leave it off. Okay, perfect. It might cool things off a little bit. So right now we offer Gallup, for example, in the fall. With this Gallup Pulse opportunity, it's a subset of questions that are derived from the Gallup itself. We don't offer these subset of questions yet. We offer the Gallup in the fall. And so we believe that actually in an interpretation of this guardrail, that we could actually ask these questions in the Gallup Pulse, but we would need to wait until the spring to offer these questions. So we'd have to wait for a whole, basically a year to get baseline data. So that's why it's not listed similarly as the other interim guardrails. Did I describe that pretty well, Mary?
We gave it in the fall for the first time.
You already did, or you?
We have and.
The culture of inclusion index is what you're referencing.
Yes. And we, it's on a five-point scale. We got it as an organization-wide, 3.3 or 3.73. So we want to switch to actually pulling those questions out and adding some more questions, which we'll get to in guardrail four and doing those, doing intentional work around those questions and doing repulsing, pulsing, resurinating those in the spring. So we're a little leery of setting a interim guardrail of something, we just have like one singular data point, not knowing that where our trajectory is.
Yeah, how do we, how do we even do that if all we have is one year of baseline data? How do we set the three-year, four-year out? Do we go based on national norms or?
They get to start measuring, right? It would be a if they're going to do it, they would decide to do this as an interim. It might not be an interim now, but an interim that they're, that they are going to begin exploring to set. Because intervals are one to three years.
Right, so from the standpoint of setting a predictive. Ideally, it should be a predictive goal, not like goals in the right percentage or whatever measure we're using. So we wouldn't have the ability to, for it to be predictive and that if we just have baseline.
Yeah, we don't know if it's attainable. Everyone, everyone don't know if it's a stretch either. It'd be cheating, throwing it dark.
Um, AJ, is it fair game to ask about tactics? Because I think these are important metrics that you're laying out, but I'm really curious to understand the how and can we, can I?
So the short answer is not so much. But the the main thing you're trying to understand right now is if I saw the data, would that would that be convincing to me that the superintendent is in fact protecting the values that are described in the guardrail? And how the superintendent might get there or not isn't isn't a part of this conversation. So that being said, if you look at this data and you think, well, no, this isn't convincing to me, then so so be it. But this is really about what, what would the results have to be that would convince you that the values of guardrail number three is being protected? And then the superintendent, once all this is put in place, the superintendent has the freedom to use whatever tactics they want to try to move the needle on these, as long as those tactics move the district in the direction of the goals and do not violate the guardrails.
So one of the things that I would offer is the the third interim guardrail that you'll see there under the the third guardrail is italicized for all the reasons that we've kind of already discussed a little bit. The other two we feel do represent a reasonable interpretation of that guardrail in and of itself. So I just want to lift that to say if if we think that that third interim guardrail is not, we're not there yet, the team and I do feel strongly that the first two do represent the guardrail.
Can I add a little bit about that third?
Please, please.
So we had a lot of conversation around that third guardrail, especially around the language of cultural response, culturally responsiveness that is written within the guardrail itself. And part of the reason we want to move towards using the cultural of inclusion index is it gives us a way at the administrative level of measuring how culturally responsive we are being towards staff and our efforts to retain our non-white staff. So we have to learn how to be better in our spaces as leaders to have a, create the condition and create the space, the necessary spaces for our non-white staff to have that that safety and security of wanting to be here and wanting to work here. And so with with adding that interim guardrail, once we have the data points to be able to say that it's attainable and achievable and stretch and all the things that we have to have, it is a way for us to hit the the retention that we are striving for because we're never going to reach that goal of us being representative if we aren't retaining at a at a much higher rate as well as bringing more folks in. And the the safer we create and the better, not safer, the the more that we create the necessary space for our non-white employees, that is also going to help with the recruitment of non-white teaching staff to come in, which is why you see that that cultural, why we want to monitor that cultural inclusion index and that way to see how we are doing as leaders in helping our staff with this one.
Do you worry that the separation rate could be distorted? People are leaving education for so many reasons right now, like this is what I'm trying to get at. The headlines are murky. Some people are leaving because they don't want to teach anymore, not because they don't feel respected. So I guess I just raise that up as a headline, but I'm not sure that there's anything to do about it. Because it's a, it's, it's, they're either here or they're not, right? I mean, that separation rate, it doesn't qualify for exit interview. Why did you leave? It's just, yeah.
We did, if they moved up in the organization to a specialist, which would be like a curriculum coordinator or an admin position, we actually counted them as not separated. So, but everyone else. Yeah. And actually, we talked about that too, because you can see, you can see the jump in separation rate, which you can actually see this past year. We had a line chart of white versus non-white, those data points, 20, 21 were real close. Huge spread this year between white and non-white. But white was up too, but.
So the expect.
Oh, go ahead.
So the expectation is that every teacher or employee would fill this out?
The cultural inclusion index?
Yes.
Right, so we, we gave this for all, all employees.
Are we taking that off the table?
Well, the reason why we're, I'm speaking about it, about being a possibility. Say that again.
If she asks if it's on the tailoring, it will be in the future.
Sorry, yeah, that's actually, yeah, that's a succinct answer to that.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that I particularly appreciate the energy you have in here for A and B, being a person who was a former employee of this district and separating from this district for reasons that were probably similar to some of the other employees who look at me who have left this district. So I appreciate being able to track that. I think, of course, COVID adds another layer to it, but you're still, that layer exists still as being a staff of color, of choosing to leave because of not feeling valued and appreciated or feeling that people understand you. So I just want to say that I appreciate you all uplifting that and and fitting, putting that in there.
Thank you.
Again, how are you defining teaching positions?
Those with a teaching contract.
I was gonna say, if you go to page six, oh, is it there? It's, you got it, thank you. If it was just out of curiosity, broader than, or how did you, let me ask the question differently. How and why did you choose just those with a teaching contract?
Because of the language of the guardrail, that the superintendent, the composition of the teaching and learning staff. We went very specific in that regard. We also know that our certified teaching staff is where we see the largest white staff population percentages.
Who is not included? Who would be, what are some classifications of individuals not included in the teaching and learning staff? Oh, here.
Yeah.
Food service, after school fare, bus drivers.
Coaches.
Yeah, athletic coaches, but lots of them are not full-time employees.
Okay. We've kind of had a little bit of a lull in this one, so I'm gonna go to number four. All right, sound good? So the the last guardrail, the fourth guardrail, the superintendent should not allow an environment for both students and staff that is unsafe and unwelcome. This, the interim guardrails represented here, we have, we have measures that actually ask students and staff about the safety and belonging. And I guess I want to lift up the belonging aspect of that too, because that's a key component of this. And the grade levels that we chose were basically as a result of the the national percentile rank and where we see the greatest need to focus these efforts. The the third guardrail specifically, or the interim, third interim guardrail is kind of similar to the the previous conversation that we had, that we just had around the Gallup Pulse survey. And so we identified a combination of questions that we could pull to help us ask questions of all staff, right? Because the the other aspect of this too is, we currently ask staff, correct me if I'm wrong, Jake and or Mary, teaching staff about their feelings of safety and belonging through the panorama, is that correct? Anybody assigned to a building. That doesn't actually get to all staff. And so by inserting that third interim guardrail letter C there with the Gallup Pulse, we feel like we could actually get to all staff and ask these questions of them about their perceptions of being, feeling safe and their perceived perceptions of their own well-being and feeling welcome.
I'm not sure if I'm framing this right.
No, I'm sorry.
Because I what I'm trying to say is I don't necessarily know that the measures you're suggesting, in my opinion, fully address the guardrail. Am I allowed to say that?
Sure.
So I, I feel like surveys are one way, but it doesn't necessarily capture, and I don't know if I want to say incident reporting or, but, but we know it's pretty pervasive right now in schools. Different behavioral incidents. I think the evolution from the SRO, the restorative justice approach. I'm not sure we've seen any compelling data that tells a story, other than the first kind of information sharing that was done by Jake, I think with little, you know, limited prep time. So this for me feels like it doesn't tell the full story of what's happening in a school and I'm yeah.
Please.
And so if I, if I could just mention, you asked the question and I want to make sure to answer it so you know this. You asked, I don't feel like this addresses the entirety of the guardrail. Is that a question I can ask? That is 100% an appropriate line of inquiry during this activity.
Thank you.
Incident. You define referrals in a way that custom one, custom defined, when you write one. So I'd be hard to say, say that. Is that a particular measure of data bad? That's why I personally struggle with the measures, incidences, has it been involved in that space? It's hard to draw on that across. There's three that might be writing those kinds of incidences. But what we can validate, what Stevens will leave me true about, what they're experiencing. We have measures that are validated on that perspective. So that, that's why we've got that, the warning is their perspective can be validated. We don't survey his norm. That's not norm, but most importantly, written in a way that would be valid results. I think that's, you know, the the reason that we would say that, that perspective based data, we can still look at undermining data as terms of this, right? We see lower just behavior, our intervention is creating a better environment. But I think what you're, what you're getting at is a good question, but might be team leads that tell us what may be impact off through our actions. If you were to, just again, so a southern school, is there more or less incidences of findings? And do those students there perceive that to be safer or less unsafe?
You know, I think it's, it's not about comparing ourselves to other school districts because we're so unique. I I think it feels like we're we aren't giving ourselves a complete picture of the issues. And I guess I'd ask everybody to consider other other ways to do that.
Sure.
If not, incident reports.
When you say incident reports, are you talking behavior incidents or are you talking about individuals placing? And forgive me, I don't know the proper term, but filling out.
Yeah.
You're thinking behavior.
I'm talking about behavior. I think that, and look, I don't think I'm alone, the anecdotes that are coming out of schools of bullying, of violence. There's no accountability maybe to understand. Like, how are you? Yeah, how are you addressing that in a way that is, how do, how do you as a leader of the organization process the numerous reports of those types of incidents and understand that they are being addressed, that that is kind of, that is decreasing? I, I'm not, I'm, I'm working my way through the question.
No, I'm with you.
But.
It's a good grapple.
Thank you.
Sure. So, a couple of sort of thoughts out loud.
How do we know you're fixing the problem?
Yeah, no, I think that's a, a fair question, right? And I think, number one, defining the problem, right, collectively is, is something that we also need to do, right? So I'll use some examples of this year where social media posts would lead the general public, if you will, to believe that schools are zoos and there's fights all over the place. As I walk buildings, which is pretty frequently, even with board members sitting at the table, that's actually not the case. It's portrayed as such through a social media blast. And so I wonder about our ability to tell a story differently about what's actually happening in schools and where some opportunity is there. That, I'm, I'm using that as an example to address some of the, the social media glamorization, if you will, of incident or a few incidents that occur. The, I'll go back to the, where we felt really strongly about the, the interim guard rail utilizing the Panorama data is that it actually asks questions of students in all aspects of safety, physical, social safety, emotional safety, mental health. There's all of these questions that culminate and allow us to actually dig more deeply into their, their responses of how they are feeling in all of those aspects. And so it gave us not only a culminating response from the students themselves, but it also allowed us to dig more deeply into granular, to give us some responsive opportunities, if that makes sense. It, so when you ask me like, how do, how do I know that I, that I'm fixing and things like that? I think that's a really fair question. Because I can tell you when a social media post goes up and it says that there's, there was a gigantic fight and a, and a melee, yeah, my heart rate goes up and it's hard to sleep. And so over the years, I think I've become better, not great, at responding with questions that helped me to understand what actually took place specifically and uniquely. And well, how does that particular incident, how was that characterized in the overall culture and wellbeing of the students and the staff experience at that building? And I, to Jake's point, in my experience looking at just incidents, and I'm, I'm character, this is my definition, I'm characterizing incidents as what is a behavior, what does an adult enter in as a behavior referral, as that being an incident that's captured and knowing that that's latent with racist, racism, bias, emotion a lot of times. I'm upset because that happened to me in my classroom and I whited out in, in an emotional state. And
So where would a referral, I'm looking like level two?
Level two, yeah, yeah.
So starting with level two.
Level two is right. So, and I'm glad you actually pointed this, this is actually helpful, Jackie. The other thing that we talked a lot about was the potential, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong or right in my terminology, Cindy, to not go down this road of double jeopardy of using multiple metrics in all these guard rails as, as the metric to by which we're adhering to the values that are articulated in the guardrails themselves. So looking at referral rates in the first guard rail as an interim, and we felt like was maybe getting to maybe where you are expressing, help me if I'm, if I'm not tracking what you will, around the incidence aspect of this? Maybe not.
I'm gonna let the people talk.
No, you're good, you're good. No, you're not. I appreciate the question. It's really helpful.
I didn't mean to compare ourselves to other schools. What I meant was, it's hard to even for less equals good. Specifically, we're talking about attracting what I generally is, you know, age-appropriate misbehavior that we're trying to teach. So it's just a difficult saying, like, less does not always equal good, and more doesn't always equal bad. Specifically, clear the lens of referrals inherently perceive us, make us perceive the behaviors to be good or bad versus what we're trying to capture is what students can do and what we need to help support them to do. This isn't, I think, so that's where I'd say it's hard to say from one billion that if you're down 10%, that your finding is better. That may not necessarily be true. Many instances aren't observable for staff to document. Many incidents occur somewhere else. Or maybe staff are not conducting incidences, but they haven't affected the good order of the learning environment, which is a policy. So like, I think there's a lot of variables in there. What we know to be true is when we ask students, we want to express that in a way, there is correlation between less incidences. It's not always true. That helps verify our point of view.
How, how does the restorative, and I, I came on the school board after the SRO decision was made, but I think part of the decision factored in that there'd be an evolution to the restorative justice approach. And how does that factor into, to this guard rail, if at all? The embracing of the restorative justice approach or the training or the modeling or the staffing of, does that?
It's an input that would be captured in this data set.
The number of people trained or positions.
Correct, absolutely.
Yeah, we have, this is a town place, but the high schools where we invest in making multineural improvement, perspective based data of just, you know, not allowing students to be walking. That's just one problem. Data that suggests that, is it a high school on this measure? The reason, one reason we chose that is just, we invested in this, you know, specific effort in high schools. It's that's weird, it's all, seeing positive perceptions of schools. And we're sort of just as piece of that is, is connected with training, walking and talking about, seeing that, you know, mistakes that are made, things that we keep fixing and talking about, not obscured in longer, like, that appropriate misbehavior is something that we have, or age-appropriate misbehavior is something we have to talk about. The referral gives it a connotation that's not necessarily there.
And the Panorama, when it's being given twice a year, correct? So you would be using that midterm data to co-correct appropriately? And if needed, if we needed a off-cycle, monitoring, or we could request that based on that midterm data, if we were getting a lot of feedback from parents, students, et cetera, similar to what we got this year, of concern that would allow us to request?
Just real quick, you don't know what your on-cycle monitoring reports are right now because you don't have them on a grand calendar.
Correct.
Guard rails are at least once. So you might choose to do it more than once to begin with.
But we would have, have something.
The worst one, yeah.
I believe that this captures the, my original intent in the regard for, I believe that these interns capture that for me.
Other questions?
I have general questions that I don't know if we're into that section yet. So I'll wait to see if others still have questions on number four.
All right. So since the questions for clarity, it sounds like have been answered, then let's transition to the next phase of this, which is to ask, you know, for each of the four guard rails, based on what you now understand about the superintendent's interpretation of them as revealed through their interims. Would you want to keep it, delete it, or modify it? So let's start with guard rail number one. The superintendent should not allow the continuation of systemic racism or inequitable treatment of students. Do you want to keep it, delete it, or modify it? To keep it would be to suggest that, yeah, I'm comfortable with the superintendent's interpretation as revealed by the interims. To modify it would be to suggest, yeah, maybe we need to offer the superintendent more clarity than we have, and we need to be more explicit in what we meant with this guard rail. Or to delete it would be to suggest that, you know, now that I'm looking at this, I'm realizing this is not actually as mission critical as we originally thought it might be. So, guard rail number one, keep, delete, or modify?
Keep it.
Keep. And if we just want, when we, if we just want more transparency in the data that comes when we see the first monitoring report?
Say more about that, what do you mean?
Well, we had talked about this, and remember, we had said as an example, like, who is the, who is the, what is the baseline? Then what's the, what's the total? What's the, is that the, who's math? Numerator?
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, so if you have questions that will help you better understand the data that's presented, that's always fair game.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So if you're looking at the, if you're looking at, you know, June 2023, it says 1.59. 1.59 out of what? Is that, you know, 1.5, is that, you know, you know, is it out of 2.0? Like, you know, what, what is, you know, is, is that normal for districts of our size? I mean, things that are helping you understand what that 1.5 means, that's fair game. What's, what, what isn't fair game is, okay, so this is 1.59 for black male students compared to all white students. What is it for Latino students? Well, that's not part of the interpretation. And if you think it should be part of the interpretation, then maybe you need to be more explicit in the defining of your guard rail. So that's why we're, you know, having this conversation is, the data is the data. That's the only data you're gonna get. Now, things that will help you understand, okay, what does this data mean? That's always gonna be fair game. Additional data above and beyond this data that isn't contemplated by the interim guard rail, that's not gonna be fair game. And so if there's, if the intra-metrics as put forth here don't match what you were expecting, then it's on you all to be more clear about what you expected. So with that, still listening, anybody else, keep, delete, or modify? Are there any deletes out there?
I want to ask a clarifying question of the board members that have been here for a while. Black male students, or maybe, is the reason black male students are called out because they are in the data the lowest performing? And so the assumption is that black male, Latino, like, I, I think that, I, I think just maybe a question is, why aren't we calling out other?
Yeah. So this is a very reasonable question for the superintendent to answer.
Yeah, and it's because of what you just referenced is, our data tells us that our systems are, are, are less effective, have been less effective up to this point in terms of supporting black male students as a, as a group of students in comparison to our Latinx students or our Asian Pacific Islander students. So yes, that's where our, our, our data's been most discrepant.
Anyone else? Thoughts? Keep, delete, modify? What are you thinking?
I think most of us said, had said keep.
Jenna, are you out there still?
I'm here, I agree. I echo all the same concerns. So I think additional information would be beneficial, but I agree with keep.
All right. Let's talk about number two. The superintendent should not allow the social emotional learning needs of marginalized students to be unaddressed. Keep, delete, or modify, and why? Anybody out there? Keep, delete, or modify?
Keep, keep, keep.
All right, that one sounded fairly straightforward. But number three, the superintendent should not allow the composition of the teaching and learning staff to diverge regarding demographics or cultural responsiveness from the student population. Keep, delete, or modify?
So I would like to just put modify on the table. I think I'm struggling with teaching and learning staff, solely teaching and learning staff. Like, I guess I understand that that's where the disproportionality is. I'm not sure.
What, what modification would you suggest?
Just a different way to classify staff. I just think that.
So instead of teaching and learning staff, what would you recommend?
All the MPS staff, and, and maybe that's, there's a reason why that's not a good idea. It's too broad, it's too, but I, I just, I think that.
So the change, the change you might make is?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the change you might make is a composition of district staff to diverge rather than a composition of the teaching and learning staff to diverge?
Correct. That's a suggestion.
Board members, talk among yourselves.
I think when we initially had discussed the specifics around the population, we had at the foundational level, the research that shows that students that had direct contact with an individual, and Jake, you said it just moments ago, that as a student of color, if I have a teacher or an interventionist or a counselor of color, then I have a much higher likelihood of success. So that was kind of at the basis of the conversation when we were deciding that population.
But he's not saying if I had a coach, a restorative justice coordinator, a lunch lady, like, I just, I think we have to work really hard to keep all of our non-white staff.
Yeah.
And just want to say that.
And the one thing too is, when you look at our staff, like our custodial staff, our food service staff, you know, those numbers, when you look at in comparison to, to race, we have higher numbers of black staff in those roles. We don't in our teaching and learning.
I know, yeah.
And so.
I see the data. That, that's also something to pay attention to. That's my fear. If we say all staff, then our focus will fall someplace where we don't, where we really need to be aware of where we want our focus to be. That's, that's just a concern.
I think, go ahead. I'm just walking into the conversation. But I, I think that every person in a building that has direct contact with a student has the ability to have a huge impact on that student. And those, there are people, there are key people, I think, in buildings that have the ability to create safety, think of feeling of safety for students. And I think that that somehow has to be acknowledged, referenced. Just because I think the potential that those individuals have, I mean, the, the presence, I mean, I think of the lunch lady. So.
I also think it's potential feeder system. Like, I, I mean, I look at a lot of the people that are in non-teaching positions, they could go into teaching positions. If they're here because they love kids, then they should be on a pathway to be put in a teaching and learning staff. So.
So this is Jenna. I want to jump in because I hear what you're both saying, but I think, I think what I would like to be solved for is the lack of representation in our teacher, teacher staff and our associate level. I get what you're both saying, but I think, I get what you're saying about a pipeline and a feeder, but I think, like, the house is on fire with our lack of representation of our student population in that, in those critical areas of, in the classrooms, and I, I, I think, you know, we're talking about, what are we gonna solve in three years? I don't know, I, I get what you're saying, I'm just, I'm, I think we're trying, we're, but we're attacking two different problems, and we need to decide which problem are we gonna attack right now? I mean, there's so many.
So that's actually the exact point I was gonna make, Jenna, is that I think, I think as a board, you do need to decide which, I think both of these are worthwhile problems to try to solve. One of those is representationality writ large in your staff, district-wide staff. Hence, if, if that's the problem you're trying to solve, it would make sense to change it from the composition of the teaching and learning staff to the composition of district staff. If the problem you're trying to solve for is students' experience of instruction, then obviously you'd leave it as the composition of the teaching, teaching and learning staff, you know, rather than, you know, all staff. Both of those, I think, are reasonable and worthwhile problems to solve for. I think as a, as a body, you just need to decide which of those you're solving for, and then apply the appropriate language. Other thoughts on this? All right, where does that leave folks? Keep, delete, modify? Shrug emoji?
I mean, I, I totally appreciate teaching and learning is the higher priority. But I, I, I just continue to worry that we've got a goldmine of individuals who've chosen to work for DMPS, and I hate the thought of, so...
I know this is not for management, supposed to be in this conversation, I don't think, right now. If I could offer that, perhaps what you're lifting up, Jackie, which I, I really appreciate, and I think the team does as well, is the potential input that we apply in terms of growing our own actually would impact this teaching and learning retention rate. And so I would offer that, I think we could get to what you're lifting up through our inputs and our actions to impact these metrics.
And that's something you guys are currently doing, though, right now.
We do, right.
So you are, are making strides to grow your own, just some of the program that you're having, from Dream to Teach to operating, you know, associates and individuals. My sister is one of those individuals in this district, now will become a teacher, you know, be a community schools coordinator, so I think that you all are doing that right now, and so that is actually happening.
And an opportunity for us is to do it in a more focused, cohesive manner that realigns resources and time and energy in impacting those inputs to see movement in these metrics.
Being intentional.
In intention. And not relying on what we've done in the past.
Matt, what is your separation rate for all students, for all teaching positions?
For all the, as, as it's currently written in terms of teaching positions?
Yeah.
Of what's currently written there, the current separation rate is 16.5%.
No, that's for your non-white. What is it for, do you know what it is for white, off the top of your head?
Oh, for all staff, sorry.
Closer to 11, 12.
Mary's pulling it right now, but off memory, closer to 11 to 12.
Okay, got you. So the, I don't know how I missed this while we were going through the conversation. The only question, the only red flag that I would raise for B is that it doesn't have the, it suggests that this should be true for all staff, where I would warn you that that may not be true for all staff, for, that there may be circumstances where it is, in fact, appropriate to separate from teachers regardless of their race. And so you might consider clarifying, you know, so if you, I don't know how many performance tiers are in your teacher evaluation system.
Are you suggesting removing separations based on...
No. Yes, yes, thank you, that, that is exactly.
From the region altogether?
Yeah, I, I would be, I would be cautious against saying carte blanche, we don't want separations, especially as you dip below the percentage separation rate for all staff. So if you'd said, we're going from 16, and we're gonna try to, you know, be around where all staff is, around 11, then I'd have fewer concerns, but since you were dipping below that, which I think is a reasonable expectation, I would just be cautious about applying that universally, and say, either say for non-white staff, you know, in the, you know, top, I, I mean, it creates other problems, it's just, I would encourage you to be thinking through that. I saw another district go this route, and it led to unintended consequences, so just want to put that out there. Any board members, anything else? Keep, delete, modify on number three? Any other reflections on this?
I think the consent, I'm speaking for my board colleagues, the consensus in the room is teaching and learning staff is of higher priority, so no to modify.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that, I think when we're looking at, similar to when we're looking at guardrail 1.1.a., and the question was asked, why black male students? You're saying, yeah, like, we're looking at the most discrepant population to focus our efforts on, and that's why I would advocate to continue to keep the teaching and learning.
All right, so it doesn't sound like this conversation is shifting significantly, so we'll, you know, hear consensus there, move on to number four. The superintendent should not allow an environment for both students and staff that is unsafe and unwelcome. Keep, delete, or modify? And while you all are contemplating that, I might offer a potential modify. Should that be either or instead of both and?
Can you clarify in the guardrail itself?
Yes.
Can you read it? Read how you say it? Write it?
The superintendent should not allow an environment for both students and staff that is unsafe and unwelcome, or the superintendent shall not allow an environment for either students or staff that is unsafe and unwelcome. Not, not huge, I was just, I, I was just puzzling that in my mind. Board members, keep, delete, or modify?
Keep. Keep, I just, I just wish we could have a, keep.
Do we have any deletes or modifies out there?
No, I just still feel like the, the underlying story isn't, leaves me wanting, but we've talked about it, and I think the two targets that are there are good targets.
The, the, the two interims?
Yeah.
Gotcha. Specifically, you talk about school safety and some A and C.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody else? Any other deletes or modifies out there? All right, so we have completed that activity. It sounds like superintendent, you've got clarity to proceed until apprehended.
Got it. Understood.
I just really want to take a moment of privilege to say how much I, you know, value and appreciate the work that the administration did on putting this together. I think they came up with some really creative ways of trying to track our, the board's value, or the community's values being honored. You know, the risk ratio in particular, I've not seen another district use that particular indicator before, and so I'll be watching with great interest if that really helps the management team measure and modify their strategies in real time. And so I just appreciate the thoughtfulness and the creativity that they put into. Also, I was not able to be present for most of those meetings, and so I just want to thank Cindy Elsberg for being my stunt double, and being able to support the administration in the moments that I was not able to.
We would also like to thank Cindy.
She's quite brainy, quite useful. So that takes us to the next piece of our agenda, which will...
AJ, I think you had something to say.
I was just, for your gratitude, and you did lift up risk ratio, and one of the, the things that's kind of been swirling in the back of my head is, the two measures of risk ratio and separation rate are very well described in this document. I understand them, but I think communicating this out to our community...
Most, most people will not, you're correct.
Yes, as a board, we will need to be very intentional about communicating this, being very transparent about what it means, and all be on the same page with explaining what it means when we're out in the community, so just something to think about as we...
You know, Matt, what might be helpful is if you create a modified version of this, it sounds like this document stands, so mission complete, well done. What might be helpful is if you and your team create a modified version of this, and it's just a FAQ that is written as if you were trying to communicate it to parents.
Yes, sir, I was just taking some similar notes.
Yeah, and then provide that FAQ to the board members so that they have the family-friendly language to use to explain some of these ideas when called upon to do so.
Yes, sir.
I'm actually quite surprised that no other district's using risk ratios, because that's what the Office of Civil Rights is using.
And, and it is required of all states. And so, I mean, the second I saw it, I was like, why haven't I seen this before? Because it is, it is a federal requirement, everybody has the data, but I've never seen another district use it even when they have very similar guardrails. So, like I said, this will be one of those things that joins my potential exemplar list to share with other districts, and when they ask about it, I'll say, talk to those brainiacs in Des Moines, they got something for you. Any other comments before we transition? All right, then the last conversation of the day is a conversation that we started previously but didn't finish, and I think, are we missing two board members this evening?
Terry's here now.
Oh, Terry, good, glad you made it. So are we missing one board member? We got everybody.
Can we get a break? AJ, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we're having, I'm having more difficulty hearing you as it goes on.
The air's on, you want me to shut the fan off now?
That's because you all don't want to melt?
Am I leaving, leaving?
I don't know. We have Tim's computer.
I don't think I'm leaving.
You're not, okay.
While they're struggling to hear me, Cindy, are you able to help at all?
What'd you say, AJ?
Are you able to help at all while people are having trouble hearing me?
Well, if we leave, people will be close to crying, because it's Tim's computer, that's the only other issue.
Maybe it's just me. What do you mean, me to help?
So we, we've just got one conversation left, and it was a conversation about board behavior, but we never finished last time.
We're just moving.
Can you all...
Yeah, hold on, AJ, I'm gonna try and get you on my computer here. I think Tim is staying. Tim, are you staying or going?
I'm staying.
Okay, you don't have to.
Bye, Allison.
All right.
Bye.
Sounds like she's logging.
Unless you're doing counseling, thank you.
No, we just don't want you to feel obligated because we have your, we've held you hostage.
I'm sure it's not an exciting conversation. Yeah, she's getting it. She's on the fish, she's feeling it. Oh, my. It's just not terribly fast.
Can I start the hell your transitioning computer?
Yep, and I'm bringing it up right now, so you should be able to...
Here, Tim, hold on, we're gonna, it's not gonna log off, right? Because Rosie's kind of the gatekeeper.
I can stand here to make sure that you're good. All right, AJ, we're gonna leave it, we're gonna leave it.
Oh, wait, oh, wait.
We're definitely gonna not leave it, we're definitely not leaving it. Yeah, you're in right now, looks just like you're calling.
Thank you, Tim.
All right. Hold on, I gotta turn you up here. Okay, can you guys hear?
I can.
Yes.
All right.
All right, tech works, excellent. All right, so the last time that we were together, we started a conversation about board expectations of board behaviors during the period of the interim superintendency, and we started the conversation, but then we ran out of time, and folks were pretty exhausted, justifiably so, and so we paused there. So, the question is, do you pause and pick up this conversation later? But if that's the case, then you have to put this on as the first item on an agenda, not the last, or do we want to take some, go into overtime and spend some time digging into this conversation tonight?
Do you have a specific agenda or question?
AJ's gonna lead us through it. We started, I feel like, the majority of this conversation the last time. I'm gonna stop saying things will be short because I lie every time, but, you know, I think we can get through this in pretty quick order, but it's, it's up to you all, so I'll let you, do we pause or keep on?
What's the end that we want to achieve? Where do we, I mean...
Yeah, so what we were trying to ascertain last time, were there any, was the board going to focus on holding the interim superintendent accountable for accomplishing the goals and honoring the guardrails? Or was the board thinking that it had some type of additional items that it was essentially evaluating its interim superintendent on? What's also changed is that you were having that before the interim superintendent was really the interim superintendent, they were kind of the interim superintendent in waiting. Now they obviously are the interim superintendent, and so you have a little bit more data to go on. But that was the question, is, is the board wanting to add additional items that are kind of interim-specific, or is the board wanting to focus on its... Or is the board wanting to focus on its goals and guardrails?
I personally think it's goals and guardrails as are articulated. I mean, I agree. Why would we interrupt the flow now and then have to regenerate all of the work after we get through our selection process? It just seems like if, if they're good today, they should be good throughout.
I, I'm fine with that, but I think, and I shared with all of you a memo, and I hope you took the time to read it because I tried to speak in the language of student outcomes-focused governance. Then we all collectively have to adhere, including the superintendent, interim superintendent, including individual board members, including, we all have to be accountable to behaviors. And I would just, I think that's really important, that we have to own our behavior. And that means more, you know, I mean, I kind of went through it point by point, but it's information sharing by the superintendent. We need to have an approved monitoring calendar, like all of the things that are supposed to be building trust in the infrastructure, we have to do it. And so I, I still feel like I don't understand, and Juana and I had a great conversation about this for, you know, over an hour, and she ended listening to me. But, but there are things that are really important to do student outcomes-focused governance, right? And, and, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I'm actually gonna contradict you. You just said a moment ago that you don't think you understand. I actually think you understand perfectly. She's 100% correct that in order to have a robust progress monitoring system, there are key components that you all lack. And in the absence of those, saying that you are focusing your systems on student outcomes is hollow. And so her memo to that effect is, I think, was well-stated. What Cindy and I have done is we've tried to revamp your implementation timeline to indicate that some of the very things that she's describing, like having a monitoring calendar, like addressing the fact that you had prior policies that have never been monitored, but have, I don't know if they've exactly been released or not. Like, but there are some cleanups that have to happen in order for you all to seriously and authentically follow through on the things that you're claiming. And so that, the point that she made, that point that she made in the memo, I think, is very, very spot-on. And so our response is your coaching team has been to revamp your implementation timeline. And we'd like to present that to you all. And we can email that out tomorrow. Nobody's gonna read it tonight. But you will need to make time in your agenda to finish putting in place some of these pieces. If you're going to focus it on the goals and guardrails, that's fine. But you will need to put in place some of the pieces that she described in her memo. So if you haven't read that in a while, I'd encourage you to go back and look at it. Because what she said on that point, that there are key elements of your monitoring system that are simply not in place, that is completely accurate. Now, this evening helps resolve some of that by providing an appropriate refresh of your interim metrics. But now the board needs to do the, the rest of the work. Other reflections on this topic?
So then AJ, thinking about then, kind of how we're moving forward as a board, I think there's some conversations still to be had. I know Matt and Cindy will probably be looking at the progress measures next, or for the goals that we have. Yeah, for the goals that we have, and then also having a conversation about the goals as far as the, our target dates and looking at those as well. So when we're talking about creating this space, really doing this robustly, I think those are some areas where we'll, we'll need to have further conversations on as well.
Yeah, no doubt. Board members, other thoughts on this?
I guess I'd be interested in hearing sort of where Matt is on this as well. And if, if there is a level of specificity that he would like for us to achieve that either we haven't articulated yet, or would be helpful.
No, thanks for asking that, Terry. How about I wonder out loud, just for a second? I'm wondering what our conversation that just took place, what that means in terms of the relationship of current management limitations?
Yes, that is, that is part of it, is the, the board has never formally released those, to my knowledge. If, if I'm incorrect, somebody tell me.
So we, we rewritten as a committee, the board policy manual, which includes redlining all management limitations and other items as well. Board members have received a draft copy of that, and we have on our upcoming work sessions, and forgive me, I am the 28th time to discuss those redlines and additions and changes. So in a perfect world, Matt, those management limitations are completely redlined and approved very, very, very soon.
Okay, and the reason why I ask that, number one, is because that sounds like you're talking about it as well. But also because in terms of a monitoring calendar and a monitoring system, that has major implications for myself and for the team and for you as well. So that's helpful to know that.
Is there any reason that management limitations agenda to be this?
I, I, I actually, I, I think somebody needs to remember, we have three new board members who I don't think we've really ever dug in to understand what we're getting rid of so quickly. So if we can do a special, I don't know if we're allowed to do a tutorial where one of you sits down just to explain what we're actually getting rid of, it would, I don't feel comfortable voting on something that I don't completely understand, so.
I think that was the intent, is that we meet up with our board buddies to go through. Because each of us, I mean, you, I think, would join Terry and, and.
But you're saying that has to happen by next week.
I, I didn't realize that there wasn't a.
I mean, just, yeah.
Okay, then, then what we'll do is we'll take this under advisement. I think that was, was that, I don't know who that was speaking, but we, we can take this under advisement and modify our proposed implementation timeline to push that back far enough that there is time for us to do one-on-ones with board members to kind of walk you through what currently exists, so that you have familiarity with that, as well as walk you through some of the boards' thinking that brought them to the current location. That way, when there is a conversation that the full board has on this topic, you're ready to be a full participant in that conversation rather than completely behind the curve. So we can build in time, we can go modify the, our proposed timeline to add in space for that to happen.
Yeah, and/or just say that we're doing it next week, and then somebody give the appropriate tutorial to understand. I just think that wasn't clear to me. So I can move quicker if somebody wants to take me through.
Yeah, and we, we can follow up with you to figure out what, particularly for the newest board members, what your needs are. We can follow up with you to figure that out and then adjust accordingly.
The, the only other thought that I had was more of a wondering about how, because I, I really appreciate the phrase that was used, trust in the infrastructure. And I'm wondering how that weekly update might include information sharing and data sharing beyond just the, the relevant of the week. You know, I know it's a weekly update, but some of those items could actually be potentially standing information items, and seasonal, if you will, right? As we get a little bit further into the summer months, some of that, that data shifts and changes, or the, the data set shifts and changes based on where we are in, in the course of the school year. Staffing's a good example of that. You know, once we get into the September, October months, by then, we will have closed, hopefully eliminated the vacancy gaps that we have. And so that data becomes less of a, of a weekly sort of update, and we replace it with a data set that the board would like to see. If that vehicle helps serve in that. The other wondering I'm having is as I, I shared with you all sort of how I spend my hours and days, and I'm wondering if there's time within that that would be helpful in answering some of these questions that the board has on a, on a, on a weekly or a bi-weekly or a monthly basis, what that might look like. I'm, I'm, I'm happy to do that. My only caveat is that we meet in a school, and so we talk about those things in schools.
Can I clarify? So when you say, you know, questions or things that come up, would these be questions that come up with regard to open guardrails and the way we're monitoring? Or would it be just general questions that would come up in the course of the day? Because I think that we have to be careful that we are not utilizing your time in ways that don't speak to everything that the board is interested, the board collective is interested in. So it's sort of like the request for information. We've got to be careful that we sort of honor, and I don't know how that's dealt with in our policies. But I, I would just want to make sure that we honor sort of our own parameters as well.
I totally, thank you for bringing that up. That's a perfect example. I was thinking of it similarly through the lens of if there are questions that you have that we might need to visit about to help provide a level of clarity and for context. I'm more than happy to do that in that weekly memo or in those visits that, that, that we would schedule. As long as we're all on the same page, when, when there's a request for information, that my response would be, if the board requests this information through this protocol, that's how I can get that to you and not spend time on individual requests. As long as we're transparent and we're okay with that, I don't want it to get awkward. That was what I'm trying to say.
And I, I think that's, because that's my concern, is that you're gonna get all these individual requests, I want this info. That is not how you should be spending your time, is jumping through hoops for us. But if, if it's an RFI, which there is a process currently, and I thought we kept it, of how the RFI process should run in terms of, you know, email to leadership, to you, and make sure it is the collective voice and not just one board member. Because that's not how, I, I personally, I don't want you spending your time that way because you, you have a lot to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so, and what, what we can do is I've added this RFI process review that I'll take the time to look at that and see if there's anything that needs to be clarified or strengthened there. Because one, and that's just part of a larger email communications as part of the board's governance process, request for information is a part of the governance process, are both areas that were in, I think, Jackie's memo, and I think are, it makes sense for me to sit down with both of those and recommend if there's any cleanups or refreshes to clarify those. And then that can be used to help guide your superintendent's actions regarding the routine updates that they provide to the board. And so I've added that to my list. And so when we, so we'll make the, now we've got two different revisions. We'll make those revisions to your implementation timeline. And we may still be able to get it out tomorrow, but if not, the day after. I'll revise them so you can see for the next year, what are the things that the board is taking on that we're proposing the board take on, and on what timeline, so that you have that sense of clarity.
And AJ, I just sent you and Cindy the updated board policy manual, so that you could have that, so you could see
Thank you.
what Kim had just referenced, so just sent that to you.
And Kim also said she's gonna, I think part of the difficulty is I didn't have, maybe I missed it. I didn't have the redline copy, so you don't know what you're losing. And so I think looking at the redline copy helps you understand.
No, and that's good because we struggle. No, we struggled because I think we all look at it differently. Like, I was like, I don't need a redline copy, but we struggled because that was the same thing.
I was frustrated because I'm like, this is driving me nuts.
Got it, okay. Thank you. And I think that seeing that will just accelerate my ability to think about.
Can you share that with me too, please?
Yeah, please. Yes.
So, so it sounds like we have a firm set of next steps. Is that the immediate next step belongs to me, and that we'll sit down, modify, make the modifications you all just asked for to your implementation timeline, and then resubmit that to you all, which then will identify exactly what are the steps that the board is needing to take and on what timeline. And again, that implementation timeline will stretch out, currently, you know, stretches out, you know, over a year, but gives you some, you know, insight into when the board is taking on critical things. I'll tell you right now that the revised timeline does need to also include superintendent search process. And so I will check in with your board chair and make sure that we include that in the revised timeline now that I'm thinking about it as well.
Is it fair to ask, can, can Matt inform, just as we think of looking at the cohesive, like the budget is just way, like, I think, feel like, implement, does the implementation timeline, can we also then use that as a working document to add in things like the budget is gonna, the budget process?
Yes, so we will definitely include both the budget and the superintendent's search timelines into this document, which will, again, intended to give you a insight into how the board will attack important issues over the next 12 months. And so we'll make sure that both of those are added on there. I think, I think budget may already be on there, but if it's not, we'll make sure to add it. That is a normal thing that we do with other districts as well.
I will just say, I'm, you know, I appreciate the goals and guardrails and moving that forward. I still am personally struggling around not having any snapshot of annual goals by the interim superintendent, which is not to say that I want to inform those goals as much as to say that it's typical in a leadership structure, and I know everybody, I'm not trying to compare it to my past leadership experience, that in addition to these very important goals that have been identified by the board and the community around literacy and math, that simultaneously, Matt is also looking at some big rocks for the district and thinking through those. I don't necessarily know what those are, and I just, is it an unfair expectation that Matt shares his annual goals? Much like he, I mean, I, I'm just trying to get my head around, you know, how to better understand the annual planning process that the superintendent puts themselves through.
Yeah, this is an important question. It is always appropriate for, if the superintendent has a written plan for something, that is a, that is a public document, and it's always, unless law says otherwise. Sometimes your security plans are not, depending on state laws. But if the superintendent has a written plan for things, then it's always appropriate for the board to want to know, is there a plan for this? And sometimes there will be a plan for things, and sometimes there won't be. Sometimes the current practice is sufficient.
So I don't believe I could be wrong that there wasn't a current practice in place by the past.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Because as you state that, this is how I'm interpreting, is that you want the board to guide him? And say you have, okay, so you're just saying if you have a plan?
No.
Okay, well, hold on, hold on.
That's Kelly's talking.
Yeah, so, yeah, I just wanted to clarify because how it was sounding to me is that you wanted the board to guide Matt and make sure he had a plan versus, AJ, how I hear you describe it, it is that if you have a plan, it could be shared with us. It's not like we're giving input, we're not giving you thoughts, you don't have to do X, Y, Z. But rather, we can take a look at what, what you have on your plate.
Sure.
And I'm actually saying.
It's reasonable for, it's reasonable for the supervisor to know that their employee has a plan. That is reasonable. That is reasonable.
Right, well said.
I didn't hear it, sorry.
I said it's reasonable for the superv, it's reasonable for a supervisor to know that their employee has a plan. That is reasonable. Um, what
Perfect, you just said it, perfect.
And what I would recommend, you know, when requests like that, you know, come in, I would treat that like any other request for information. I would put it in, you know, whatever, a weekly update or something and leave it at that. What I would never do, um, Madam Chair, if you're taking notes, this is a good time. What I would never do is put one of the superintendent's plans on a board meeting agenda. Uh, that, that will cause havoc. Um, but for the board to, you know, be informed, yes, my, my employee does in fact have a plan, that, that is always reasonable.
Is it, has a plan, or do we know what's in the plan? And here's the reason I'm, I'm actually asking from, from a behavior. If, if I know that Matt, one of his big rocks is, I don't know, um, safety at the middle school level, I'm making that up. Okay, so, but it, when other things, I think it's just helpful to know, what is, clearly your plan is addressing something that needs to be addressed, and it's helpful to understand that, not to judge it, not to critique it, but to understand how your leader is prioritizing their time based on what they've identified as important. So to be clear, it's like, he has a plan and what's in the plan at a high level?
Yes, so, so, so the only, the only challenge, so step one, yes, if he has a plan, it's a public document and if the board wants to see it, the board gets to see it. Um, and my follow-up to the board chair was never put a superintendent, a managerial implementation plan on a board agenda. Um, that will just lead to bad things.
Yeah.
Um, and so as long as kind of you live with those two um understandings, that if there's a public document, of course, the board has the right to see it, um, and it's a reasonable thing to be curious about. Though, don't be surprised if there are twenty areas that you think there should be plans on and really there's only plans in three areas. What that normally means is the superintendent is trying to disproportionately allocate managerial attention in just three areas and not twenty. Um, and so, uh, I would, I would not expect there to be a plan for every operational area, only for areas where the superintendent is trying to drive significant uh change processes for uh various business units in the organization. Um, but as long as, as long as that is understood, that the board never evaluates the superintendent on their plan, the quality of the plan, the lack or the presence of a plan, the items in the plan, and even importantly, this is a confusing one for some folks, you would never evaluate the superintendent on did they implement their plan. The only thing, as long as you remember, the only thing you'd evaluate them on is the goals, guardrails, interim goals, interim guardrails, then knowing that they have a plan and knowing what's in it is perfectly healthy, as long as it's, as long as it doesn't go beyond that.
Got it, thank you.
So what it sounds like to me is uh that we've got um some clear, the, the next steps for the board effectiveness is really falls on, you know, me and, you know, my team. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna go back to work, uh, we're gonna make the updates that you all have requested this evening. Um, and then we will get that revised um timeline out to you so that you have a sense of what does the next year look like. Eventually, we'll put that back before you and ask you to adopt it so that it has the imprimatur of the full board. Um, and at that time, if there are things that we missed or things that we mistimed, that you can make adjustments. So when we send you back the timeline, the expectation will be that you all take action on it to say, yes, this is our timeline. This is, this is what we're gonna focus on and when we're gonna focus on it. Uh, and so that's the next step. Um, and again, we will do our level best to get that back to you uh this week, even though uh we keep getting Boris Syvitz added on to it. I still think we could probably get it knocked out this week and get it back to you so that you all can consider it whenever your next meeting comes up. Uh, any other questions on this topic about board behavior and board expectations uh in the near term? Before we wrap up for the evening, any other uh comments or issues?
Do we want to put this on for next week?
Uh, so, so we'll, we'll try to, based on the additional things that have been added to it, we'll try to have it to you by end of business on uh Friday now at this point, since our homework keeps getting increased. Um, but yeah, whenever you all want to put it on, that's up to you all, just, it's a matter of how much time you need in advance to have read through it and considered it and been able to ask those questions as you have them.
She was talking about the policy.
Sorry, I was pointing to the policy manual. I'm, I, well, I guess what I'm trying to say is if it's hindering Matt's ability to do something, then should we accelerate it and just get this done?
Well, I think in essence, his question really went to management limitations. And if the goal is to eliminate management limitations, and if we can agree to that, then go off and do good. Because I think that's, that was the chunk that you were most concerned with.
We would remove any of those reports that are upcoming, like they would no longer.
And I'm not, I don't know, and I, I need to read, but, so we can, if that's what it is, then, and it's that important, then why don't we just say that you'll send the redline copy and we'll look at it and
We'll say it right away to go.
by next Tuesday, we vote on it, is that right?
Uh, and um we'll try to make sure that either Cindy or I um have, make ourselves available uh for you new folks to bring you up to speed on any questions you might have about those.
So what I would offer is that there likely are other changes that go beyond just management limitations in the policy manual. But again, if we are migrating to goals and guardrails, we no longer are in the management limitation space. So even if there are other things in here that are changed, eliminating the management limitations is a function of just what you all have gone through by reviewing everything that's included in the goals and guardrails.
So could we have a, just an agenda item that just strickens that section of the current policy manual?
Or we keep the regular schedule and Matt just operates with an understanding that we're eliminating the management limitations. We don't have to approve anything immediately.
Oh, okay.
Clarification on management limitations, right?
So in, in that case, the item to put on your agenda for next week would be an, uh, essentially um so that you give formal and clear direction to your superintendent. I would just add to the agenda a motion to waive monitoring of management limitations. Um, and then that takes that off of Matt's plate while you all consider the formal decision about what to do with them.
But we'll stay on a quick trajectory to get this done, just to get it done, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But just a trajectory that is both quick and slow enough to allow the new board members to get up to speed.
So a motion to waive the monitoring of management limitations.
Yeah, and then that, that will buy a little bit of time for your new board members to get up to speed. And then ideally, um, all of, because there are multiple edits. In fact, you all just recommended some edits uh this evening uh around communications policies and things of that uh request for information policies. So there will be mo- multiple edits to the policy manual. So our intention will be to try to arrange to bring you one big, you know, redlined version of everything that needs to be changed at once instead of piecemealing it. Uh, that definitely won't happen next week, uh, but we'll try to have that ready for everybody ASAP. Uh, and we will put it in the timeline so that you'll see what timeline we predict. Uh, any other questions or concerns before we wrap this up?
No.
Um, and so, one thing that I want to clarify before we uh close out is there was a really important conversation about um managerial level plans. Um, and I, I don't want to leave without giving that just one more piece of credence, is that the board has identified its priorities, those are your goals and guardrails, and that is what you're evaluating your superintendent against. But then the superintendent has to then follow up with that by putting their own processes in place, sometimes in the form of a plan, sometimes not, to actually follow through and execute on the board's expectations. The way that you will know whether or not your employee, the superintendent, is actually making progress is because you will be monitoring it regularly uh via your goals and guardrails monitoring. If you come to a point where you have concerns that action is not taking place, um, that, that the reality of the goals and guardrails is not being implemented, probably one of the very first things uh that we'd recommend is have a conversation about that with your superintendent. But then pretty quickly following up on that is, we probably encourage you to increase the frequency of uh goal and guardrail monitoring and whatever the area of concern is. And so I say that to suggest, we do not recommend that you should ever blindly trust your superintendent. Um, and I don't mean that because of this superintendent, I mean any superintendent. Um, it is never our recommendation that the board should blindly trust the superintendent. Uh, this is always a trust but verify. And so what I hear you all asking for is, how will we know if action is actually taking place? You'll know because either you'll see the metrics moving or they don't. And if you don't see them moving, uh, then we have specific recommendations for board action in that event. That's part, that is what alleviates the board from having to monitor the superintendent's plans is because you're monitoring the metrics that you all have signed off on. Um, and so I just want to clarify that, like, it, it is not, it is not appropriate governance to simply say, you know what? We blindly trust the superintendent, we, we know he's a great guy, everything's gonna work out well. We do not recommend that. It's a trust but verify. Um, and if you have ongoing concerns, then that may mean we need to tighten up our verification system. Um, and as your coaching team, we're here to walk you through that. Um, with that last caveat, uh, I want to extend the invitation, board members, at any time you want to talk through things, you want to think through issues, feel free to reach out. A shout out to Jackie for reaching out to me multiple times uh in advance of tonight. And, you know, with the memo that you put together, your questions, I appreciate you being a scholar about this work. Um, board members, anytime you want to reach out, that's, that's what we're here for, to support you and help you be great on behalf of the students you serve. Madam Chair, back to you.
All right, well, thank you, I already sent that to Rosie, so she'll get that added to our agenda, she's already responded to me, so that will get added. Um, besides that, thank you for giving me extra time and we're adjourned, see you at the next board meeting.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, AJ.
Thanks, AJ.
Thank you, AJ.